Why don't you jump on?
Lead us in prayer.
Heavenly fathers, we start this city council meeting, we just ask that you would be present in the building. There are those here that have opinions that they wish to address tonight, and lord, we know that opinions are just like people, they're all different. Lord, we just ask that you would give these leaders of our community the wisdom to know what's best and to make the right decision for all of the people. Even when opinions don't agree, even when they might upset someone, we just ask that you would guide them to your will for the city of Ralla this evening. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I'd like to open the meeting with a pledge. Kevin, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda tonight is a consent agenda. Consider approval of the city council meeting from August 4th, which was an open and a closed session, and August 18th and August 25th, the latter of which was a workshop. First of all, are there any questions on any of the meetings? Minutes? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Shall be. Make a motion.
Terminal second.
Motion made in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next item is the report of mayor and council reports of boards and commissions. There are nine reports listed there. Are there any questions? If not, moving on to public hearings, we have one. A public hearing and ordinance to approve the fiscal 2026 budget and 2026 sewer fees. I'd like to officially open the public hearing.
Thank you, mayor. Let me just introduce the budget. We've been working on this for a few months. What was reviewed with the budget workshop just a week or two ago was a budget of $45 million. That is offset with revenues of $40,260,000 on the surface. That looks scary to have a deficit or a spend down of $4.7 million. But much of that is very intentional because we're spending about an extra $2 million coming out of the street capital improvement fund. We've just built that fund up over the years, and we want to get more of that back out into pavement. So that's a big part of it. We've also got the big storm sewer project on Ralla Street scheduled for next year as well. So the budget is actually in pretty decent shape. I wouldn't say it's in great shape, but it's in pretty decent shape. We included the full update from what we reviewed at the workshop. This has been available online, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. The budget does include a couple of fee increases, and so in the part of the public hearing, we'd like to include a discussion on the sewer fees. And so there is a dollar per month increase on the sewer service availability fee. We also have about an eight to 10% increase on trash fees, residential, a little bit more on the commercial side. The only other increase in fees is a ramping up of some of our airport hangar rents, but we're doing those as we get the new motor doors installed. They were all affected by a tornado about three years ago at the airport, and so we're still working on getting some of those upgraded. And then there's a 10% increase in the hangars as a result of that expense. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the budget.
Any questions for John on either the budget or the sewer fees?
Yes, has the trash increase, is that the fee at the stations? Is that where we're...
A big chunk of that is the increase.
And I know we've had some issues with the new trucks as well, so...
Yeah, it's amazing how much we spend on the actual disposals. And of course, we haul it to the transport station, that gets taken up to the landfill up in Cuba. I want to say, let me find it for you.
John, the fees are, are you looking for fees for Cuba?
No, hold on. Roger, Roger. No shouting from the peanut gallery. Come on.
Yeah, so the $1.2 million is on landfill fees.
Oh, yeah, that's just us all.
Wait till you get up here, so everybody can hear.
The 1.2 million, I'm sorry, 1.2 million is the fees that we are spending going to the transfer station in Cuba together. So some of that's $59 a ton, or actually $54 currently, but it's going up for us, I'm sorry, $59 currently, going up to $60.25. The transfer, I mean, the fees at the landfill are 75, so it's a lot cheaper for us all at the transfer station, but sometimes we do have to haul some of these direct hauls to Cuba, concrete and stuff like that. So that's where that fees are coming in, and we're up on tonnage, just in general, across the board. Any questions on any of that?
No, thank you. Reason I asked was I'd had some emails kind of asking me what the reasoning was, and I wanted it, you know, clear that I'd heard those people and, you know, so that they had a reason for it.
Thanks, Roger.
No problem.
Any other questions regarding either the budget or the sewer fees?
John, I just wanted to see if I could ask you briefly, kind of explain for the benefit of the public, the reasoning behind the advantage of this proposed deficit in the budget, since I think that, I don't know, I think some folks might see a budget deficit and flinch at the idea of having that and seeing that as inherently good idea. Just wonder if you could explain the logic behind that. Yeah, I mean, Missouri is a constitutional requirement for a balanced budget, both for state and local government, and that means that you can't exceed your revenues and the retained earnings or unspent dollars from previous years. Particularly, the street capital improvement fund that we're really proposing a real spend down. The last five years, we've really been doing all of the work for the TDD. So so much of work, you know, it doesn't mean we haven't been paving roads and doing some of the maintenance, but the major capital expenses have been funded by the move Ralla Transportation Development District that allowed that fund balance to be built up to several million dollars. And that's not the purpose of paying into our taxes either. So I think this year is a very intentional, let's get some of those dollars put back onto asphalt, surface seals, just ways to kind of secure our infrastructure. So that's the biggest spend down. Then, as you know, we're putting a deposit down on a new fire truck, that's $150,000. We've got $180,000 in there for the animal shelter. So, you know, kind of add those up, and that's kind of the key for a spend down of four, four and a half million dollars each year.
Okay, thank you. So, John, the constitutional requirement is you're allowed to go into a deficit if you're spending reserves?
Correct.
But not yearly ins and outs? Yeah, that's it.
It's not really a deficit.
Because of that purpose. So by law, you can spend your accumulated reserves as well.
Any other questions? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Can we have the first reading?
Did you open it up to the public?
Oh, public comment, that's right. I opened the public hearing, but I didn't get the public comment. Would any citizens like to comment on either the budget or the expected sewer fees?
There was the email question about Hancock on the sewer fee, and that's something Nathan's familiar with. Could you elaborate just a little bit on that?
Yeah, sure. So the Hancock Amendment is, I think most people know, prohibits the city from increasing taxes without a vote of the people. But an important concept in the Hancock Amendment is the difference between what are taxes and what are fees. So taxes can't be increased without a vote of the people, fees can. And there is a lot of case law back and forth about what different kind of things are fees, but in case of sewer rates, there is actually case law that specifically the courts have found those are fees. Not really surprising. Fees would also be things like charges that you have to rent the park, or other kind of things where pay for service sort of things are fees. So therefore, there's not a vote required for it. There is a public hearing required on sewer fees, not interestingly on water fees.
If there's no citizen input or questions, we'll close the public hearing and have the first reading.
An ordinance adopting an annual budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2025, appropriating funds pursuant thereto.
We have no special presentations tonight. We have two items under all business. First is an ordinance to approve a conditional use permit. John, or Tom?
All right, we talked about this last time, so I'll just go kind of quickly. The property is located at the end of Country Ridge Road. That's kind of located in the southeast part of town, just to give you a bearing, Highway 7A2 is on the edge of the map, and then the Osage Drive, and then you come off of Osage Drive to get to Country Ridge. That's the end of Country Ridge Drive. This is a street view, Country Ridge. It is a publicly dedicated right of way all the way to the property, but only a portion of it is built. The rest of it is a gravel driveway that's shared between the applicant and a neighbor. The request is to construct a golf driving range on the property. So this would be something that's kind of self-serve. They have the machine where you pay money to get some balls, and then there's a pad basically where you hit the balls into a pasture, basically. Proposals for 10 tee boxes. The range itself, it'd be about 800, 900 foot in feet in depth. There is an existing tree line along the north and east sides of where the range should be, and the proposal is to improve the gravel road to meet fire access standards, provide access to the property, and have a gravel parking area at this time. Just to give you an idea where this lays out, again, this is adjacent to the big McBride Residential Housing subdivision, but the portion that this is next to wouldn't be gotten to for a couple of years as they're developing a different area right now. This is, the proposal is a conditional use permit for an agricultural business use, so I've got the definition again of what that is, but the basic idea is when we got rid of the rural residential district and combined that in with the R1 suburban residential district, we did some way to allow for commercial type uses that you would see in agricultural type areas or on the fringes of town on larger pieces of property, things like that. And so there's a list of things, and so that's what the request is, to fall under that category. With a conditional use permit, basically you have the ability to add conditions to mitigate any impacts to surrounding properties. So when we're looking for a conditional use permit, so looking for consistency with a comprehensive plan, you're checking to make sure that the use and scale and location is compatible with the area, there are adequate utilities and facilities in the area for the use. You can impose reasonable conditions to mitigate any impacts. You can look at the impact of traffic, any relevant information you receive at the public hearings. Summarize, a conditional use permit is required for agricultural business use, in this case a golf driving range in the R1 district. It should only be approved if it's found to be of a scale and intensity that's found to be compatible with the adjacent area. Golf facilities in general are commonly located in residential and rural type areas. Planning and zoning did recommend approval with a vote of six to zero with certain conditions. Those conditions are, the first ones, that it expires in three years unless it's extended by the planning and zoning commission, and at that time, they may review it and make any modifications that they deem to be necessary. I understand there's some concern about this condition. Just wanted to put out there, yes, it's true that we don't really, it's not a condition for Ralla. Part of that is because just Ralla in general, we don't see very many conditional use permits. Under the old zoning code, very few things came in under a conditional use permit, and so you had maybe one every couple of years. In fact, you went several years in a row without having any conditional use permits. Under, when the zoning code was revised, several more things were added as potential for conditional use permits. That was partly to allow the, allow for the uses we want. We're okay with happening, to go ahead and happen. There's a little bit, a lot more permissiveness with certain things, but then things that we were concerned that there might be issues with, those are permitted under a conditional use permit, so it gives control over the things we want to have more control over. And the idea of having a kind of an expiration, we have done that before on a conditional use permit before. It was for a, it was something that came in, it was intended to be temporary, so it was added a condition, a condition was added for it to be, have an expiration date. But in general, in other places, it's not super unusual to do something like that. This case is recommended because at this time, A, the applicant, this is just sort of a first phase of what potentially may, they may do in the future, but also just right now, there's a lot of unknowns as to what the impacts might be. So allowing for three years to see what the impacts are and then reevaluate it seems like a good way to balance the needs of the applicant with the needs of the adjacent property owners. The next condition is that before they open, that we need to inspect it to make sure that they're meeting all the conditions, because this is, this particular use isn't something that is going to require any building permits, that the use be limited daylight hours, no outdoor lighting provided. That was because we didn't, the applicant is proposing that, we don't want, we don't want to put that in there to make sure that they don't go and add it later, basically. And then any expansion or adding of buildings require approval amended, to amend the conditional use permit, that the gravel access road be built and maintained to meet the fire code, which means it's about 26 feet in width. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Tom?
Yeah, Tom, I have a couple of questions. I'd like to start off with, first, is the applicant going to be extracting anything from the ground which they will be selling?
I have no idea about that. That's not being mentioned.
Okay. Are they going to be growing anything from the ground that they intend to sell?
It's not mentioned anything like that.
Okay. Are they going to be caring for animals on that property?
Not that I know of.
Are they going to be selling any kind of equipment that will help them care for animals or grow plants from the ground or extract material from the ground that they will be selling?
No, I'm not aware of anything like that.
All right. Will they be selling any equipment or to allow them to grow anything? That will, so are they going to be selling farm equipment? Are they going to be selling maneuver? Are they going to be selling fence posts? Are they going to be selling?
I'm not aware...
Anything that a farmer would use?
I'm not aware of any other use of the property other than the proposed driving range and become aware that they use the house for Airbnb.
Okay. Is golf a sport?
Is it a sport? I guess so.
I mean, all right, some people say it is, some people would just say it's a frustrating walk. So it's, so it's a recreational sport, right? Ideally, you're relieving some stress, you're...
It's recreation.
All right. So why would we not classify this land use as amusement and recreational use as opposed to agricultural business?
So...
I mean, specifically, amusement or recreational use is a business or use of the property which engages in use such as an amusement park, theme park, spectator events, dance halls, recreational sports, et cetera, as deemed by the community development director and requiring more than 20,000 square feet within a building or property for use. So the sweep of the range is, let's say roughly 30 degrees, and if the arc is roughly 250 yards, 750 feet, then you've got about 150,000 square feet of space that you're going to dedicate just to the range. So it meets the definition of a recreational sport, or the land use is for a recreational sport. It exceeds the requirement for land, so why would we not classify it as amusement or recreational use?
I would say it could be classified as that. If this was proposed in a commercial zone, that's probably what we would say. The definition for agricultural business use, it has a list of uses, and then it also ends with, or other things as determined by the community development director or approved by city council, similar to the other recreational one.
Yeah, the recreational use would also, would also need a conditional use in a C2.
Yeah.
So, all right, if there's, if we have a definition for the land use and we have a zoning, we have a zoning, a zoning area that conditionally allows that specific land use, then why not seek rezoning for this property to that zoning type, especially if they can, if they eventually have plans to go further than just a driving range?
Sure. Move back to the area map. So why not seek rezoning to a commercial? If this is not approved, then that would be the next step for the applicant, but a reason why that, why that might not have been a good idea for the first way to go is because this property, it's about 40 acres and at the end of a unbuilt road and in the middle, surrounded by residential zoning and all that. It'd be a commercial area, just sort of out in the middle of nowhere. And that would have a hard time passing the bar of not being spot zoning. And so that's why the request at this time is for it to consider it as an agricultural business use. Now, I'll say, just point of honesty, you have the ability to decide it's not appropriate to consider it as a agricultural business use and leave it at that. But that's, pursuing it this way didn't allow, didn't require them to have to rezone the property, but still allowed for us to consider this particular use and how it's laid out.
Okay. Does, does the, the map that they've provided pass your smell test as a site plan?
It was prepared on their own. We don't, we have some minimum requirements for what should be on a site plan. It has the bare minimum, I would say.
Are there going to be any signs designating or identifying the entry and exit?
Yeah, so back to the area map. The applicant does also own this other property up to the north where the, where the road will be passing through in the right of way, and go back to the street view, basically behind this house back here. So if they wanted to have some sort of directional sign, I don't think they're being wrong with that, just to let people know they're on the right road, but having a big old sign at the, say at the end of Country Ridge and Osage Drive, that would be not possible because they don't own the property there, and we don't allow those types of signs in the right of way.
Okay, so does the site plan that they provided define the location, lighting, and type of proposed signs?
They did not define any signs on the site plan.
Okay, so then this plan says that they won't have signs?
That's, there's no signs shown on the, on the plan.
Okay.
Hold on, that's not what he asked you. He asked you if this property is going to have signs. You answered, well, it's not on this plan. So I think what William was driving at is, are they allowed to have signs? Is that what you were driving at?
You know, if we pass this conditional use permit based on the site plan that's provided, then the site plan that's provided doesn't have anything about signs, so then they would not be allowed to have signs, unless we fall back to the zoning requirements for an R1, which says that, you know, an R1 can have 32 square feet of signage.
Yeah.
So which one is it? Is it the, the site plan that says they have signs or not, or is it the zoning requirement that holds?
I would, I would say if you do not want them to have any signs, you should make that a condition.
I don't, I don't care one way or the other.
I was about, they could have signs.
They could have a sign at the end of that gravel road or beginning of their property.
One sign at 32 square foot, which is what would be allowed in a residential zoned area.
Right, it still wouldn't exceed what any other R1 would have.
No, agree.
Right, sure.
But because there's nothing specifically on the site, they can't exceed what the natural zone allows.
And that's, and that's kind of what I'm getting at, is that it hasn't defined it in the CUP, and so then it opens the question. Is it allowed? Which, which brings you to the point of how the conditions are written. In, in my line of work, whenever you're making exceptions to this rule or that rule or some other rule, the first thing you do is state, all rules apply unless we specifically state otherwise. And then that the, here is the rule that we are going to amend in this circumstance, and here's how we're going to amend that rule in this circumstance. So for instance, the, with respect to the length of the street, or pardon me, the paving, right? So we say that, you know, paving is required, or you can have gravel, but the first 50 feet have to be paved, right? So then the exception would be, you know, section 42 dash 313, item one, is waived. In its place, the gravel access road must be improved, constructed, and maintained to comply with IFC requirement, or IFC appendix D as the access road in lieu of providing midway turnaround, yada, yada, yada. And then a separate point to say that section 42 dash 313, item three, is waived. Item three is the 50 feet of paved road, and we're not going to require. So you would actually go through and list exactly what it is that you are providing exception to. What are all of the conditions? Not just the relatively loose wording of the conditional use, but very explicit what those conditions are. So I just, one, I don't think that the site plan is enough. Two, I don't think that it's the right land use. And three, I don't like the way that the conditions are written. I don't think there's enough specificity to them. That's just where I am.
So, so I think two sides of this thing, several of the things that William is bringing up, I think in three years from now, when this timeframe is up, part of that, part of those things being clear, some clarity now helps Jared and Danielle in three years from now, if there's hurdles at that time. I mean, there's, there's, William said it's loose. I'm not totally against it, but it's not, it's not really buttoned up. Nathan, I do this to you every time, but you're on planning and zoning. This thing went 6-0 there. What was the feel in planning and zoning as far as the opportunities there?
I have my notes from there. I had focused on, you know, we only had, we had the neighbor, the adjacent neighbor who had come, was, I think, just trying to figure out what all was going on with it. Because of sharing an entry with their, my focus was the maintenance of it. We had added that the applicant, that the Jordans would be responsible for maintaining it. That was one. They asked questions about the Airbnb, a little bit of signage questions came up. You know, it was, it was a, one of those, it's a, it's a large area, he owns a lot of property there. It didn't seem to overly interfere. We didn't have a lot of public concern about it, and so I think, you know, generally, it wasn't going to cause a lot of issues, so it was moving forward. I think as Tom, I think Don made spoke last time on it as well, with three years to see how it's going, there's going to be more development going out there that you can kind of course correct. We did verbalize, because the applicant wasn't there the night of planning and zoning, so we're saying, you know, some of this is making sure that the applicant is aware of that things could change after these three years. So know that, like, if they need to put a net up, there were some concerns of that of, if the ball's swinging out, you guys may need to put a net up. So knowing that you may put some investment now, but later, that may come back. But we were a little bit handcuffed because the applicant was not there the night of planning and zoning. So we kind of verbalized some of our thoughts about it, but they weren't there to say, I understand that, or I don't understand that, so.
And that's what I was looking for, Nathan, is, that's my same worry. And Tom, I think you, I think you addressed this in the last city council meeting, but the things that, like Nathan just talked about, the net and the, some of the other things that were brought up when they weren't in the room, have you had follow-up conversations with them about those possibilities? But I'm trying to, I don't want a train wreck in three years where the city's here and they're here and we can't, we can't stay together. You know what I'm saying?
No, I haven't spoken to him outside the last city, city council meeting was the last time we...
But, but from the planning and zoning meeting, did you, did you let them know about any of the concerns that, that planning and zoning may have had about, say, the net or, say, other possibilities along those lines?
So he knew about the potential conditions. I sent that before the meeting, and then after the meeting, reminded him that the meeting had occurred and suggested he probably should watch the video, because a lot of issues had come up.
Okay. And there was no follow-up there as far as any red flags that they threw up to you?
Right. I haven't heard any, any concern from them.
Thanks.
From looking at the map and the developments that are going on in that area, this is obviously a area that's up and coming. It's getting new developments. There's future developments, McBride right there, Bristol and all that, Palmer Court, that's all been built, you know, fairly recently. that's all been built, you know, fairly recently from what I could tell from the photo and what I know of, you know, Rolla. And is this an area that's being, because the whole condition, three-year use, it seems like it's suspicious to me. It seems like it's a block for some reason. This T, I don't know, it just doesn't sit well with me. I'm not understanding, like he said about, you know, why, everything just feels loose and thrown together. It doesn't make much sense for an area that's being obviously developed for housing to have a business slapped right in the middle.
I mean, I'd also only verbalize, it's also, I mean, what's the total acreage of this lot? Like 40-some acres? Is that what he actually owns there?
Plus he owns some additional in the county.
But, but of this area?
Yes.
I mean, that's a fairly unusual one right there. Like, you know, in the middle of Rolla, we don't have 40-acre lots, but, so this is an unusual one. The way the applicant was talking, I don't know the history of it as well, this seems to have been annexed in at one point?
Yeah, it was part of the south side.
He kind of alluded to, like, I wouldn't need to be going through this if I wasn't had to do this anyway. And he owns the development next to it, so. I'm always cautious of handcuffing someone who owns a very large parcel that used to be in the county, now is in the city. He wants to do some...
I'm not sure that's correct. I'm not so sure he owned it when it was annexed.
I don't know.
Well, I think it is relevant to the point that you're trying to make, though. In other words, if it was already in the city...
He purchased, he purchased it knowing it was in the city, is your point. Okay. But my only point is, is that it's unusually large lot that we don't see everywhere to have, and at least what he verbalized, he has no intentions of selling it. He doesn't want to do developments. And they're even in the development realm, like, that's what they do for a living. And, you know, he wants to have a use that, you know, to, to Han's point, I mean, I understand that it's, the agriculture thing felt a little weird, but there's some flexibility when you look at, and Tom, I don't know if you have the uses in front of you of what types of things are commonly allowed in agricultural, but if I recall reading some of them, not all of them necessarily felt like agricultural-type things, that there was some flexibility that could be used in that realm, so. Anyway, that's just some of my thoughts to what you said, Shelby.
So, so part of what Shelby said, and I think, Tom, you addressed this before, it's not uncommon to have a driving range in a residential area. I mean, that's, there's a lot of cities that have that type of stuff, or a public golf course or whatever, so that one doesn't get me as much. I'm more worried about, the city is the big bad elephant in this room, okay? So three years from now, I don't want to, I don't want to feel like we've got a, you know, good, partnership is the right word, but that's how my mind works. In three years from now, we come back and have got a lot more stipulations we have to throw at them because maybe other things that happen in the city, or other comparables or whatever. I just want to try to protect, if we're going to start something, I want it, I want it to have the ability to grow and to remain where it's at within the community. And that's probably my main concern above anything else. I think planning and zoning did a great job of looking things over and thinking through things. And I see the agricultural stretch, but I still think it fits by, by the things that are there. I just don't want to, I don't want to put somebody in a bad spot right now that we're going to have to deal with in three years, or they're going to have to deal with in three years.
We'll say that partly, you know, the applicant themselves only views this as sort of a temporary thing to gauge the potential for other things for the property. So I mean, the three years, I think it's also partly for them to decide, is this a good idea or not, to invest more money?
Yep, yep.
So you're thinking they've got a future plan of full golf course there or something?
A half golf course.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's true. All right. I don't golf much. I had to think about that one there, just thinking about the size.
Tom, if, okay, let me just, let me read on Roman numeral 5A2, you have a description of the agricultural business. So let me just read that real quick. I know council's seen it, but maybe for the public's benefit. Agricultural businesses' uses include uses such as mining, seasonal sales, wind and solar generation, garden equipment sales, landscaping, malt sales, tree and plant sales, farmers' markets, boarding kennels, stables, campgrounds, event venues, and other similar uses. And then you mentioned a golf driving range is not specifically listed. However, golfing does require larger properties and is relatively low-impact use that is often found in residential. So I think we recognize when the, this proposal or application first came forward, it's a little unusual. We're going to have to ask council either take sort of a leap of faith or stretch the agriculture in a residential zone, or it's a matter of converting 30 or 40 acres to commercial to even consider a conditional use permit on the backside of a predominantly residential area. So I think that's where we're sort of at, we're at this kind of unusual timing where the applicant is looking to do something with the property and judge whether or not there's a future opportunity for expansion. And at this point, I just don't believe the applicant knows enough of the detail to go through that kind of tightening down of the requirements. And I think it's very intentional, even based on, as you said, the site plan. It's a pretty rudimentary kind of development at this point. And we're going to know a lot more in two or three years than we know today. I think the applicant's going to know a lot more in two or three years than they're going to know today.
I personally don't see any major problems that this could cause. And I do think that if there are major problems in three years, the owner will be reasonable. That's just my thought process on it. Are we just worried about establishing a precedent?
I think that's part of it, just being consistent with the things we do, with the things that have been done through the years and the things that'll be done going forward. I think that's part of it. And again, my, my big thing is protecting them as well. I mean, they're, they're going to wind up with an investment here. It may not be huge, but it's, it's still an investment.
So ultimately, what are we trying to do?
I wanted to more talk, talk through it and get everybody's input. I don't, I think, you know, based on what Tom said a minute ago, to, to go the commercial, the C2, is spot zoning. I mean, it just sounds exactly like spot zoning. So I think they took the right path here. I just wanted to talk through where we're at and what we're looking at.
Okay, I'll try and answer your question. Personally, I don't have a problem with the, the use in this particular area for a lot of reasons. My concerns at the last minute is that, if there's one thing that I've learned over the years that I've been here, is council better be really consistent with how they handle development, builders, and everybody in between. So, and that's important, because I don't think you want a situation where a month from now, somebody comes in and wants a CUP and says, "Hey, I want a Lucy Goosey CUP." Because that's what this is, in my opinion. I support it, but I think it could go, it could be a lot more with some specificity.
Specificity.
Specificity, just to not have a problem in three years.
Okay.
But, but generally, I think the, the use is suitable out there.
Yeah.
Can I?
Yeah.
While I'm debating whether, okay. So I looked up, where does a golf course fit? And golf course, as it turns out, in Rolla's code, is, falls under the description of community center, which is odd, but it specifically says golf courses.
Yeah, that would be like, if somebody's doing a golf course community, it's like if the Highlands, you know, the Highlands had one, like, well, we have one, the country club stuff, or just outside of town. So the one that's integrated in with the, with the, with a residential development. You could have that type of thing. A public one that was run as a business would be under the outdoor recreation.
So, so I don't think this totally fits as a golf, it's not a golf course. It's a driving range. You're just going to be hitting from one place, knocking balls out in the field. You're not chasing them all around.
Yeah, there's no walk.
Fair, fair point. But I would say, though, that a community center slash golf course is a permitted use in this district.
Yeah, if McBride had come in and they had one integrated in with their development, it would, and they weren't doing a PUD, that would be just something they could do. But it would be one that's just for the resident type thing.
I don't think it says that. I don't think it says that it has to be integrated with anything. It just says golf course.
Okay.
And you're saying that's a permitted use in?
In R1.
In R1.
Okay.
You know, granted, this is, this is not a golf course yet. It could become one, though.
So, Tom, what happens, let's say, three years? The driving range is successful, and now he wants to put a golf course there. Under the present zoning, what is that then? He has to rezone it, or he's going to be faced with illegal non-conforming? Or what happens, what happens at that juncture when he does want to be a golf course?
I, I'll have to respectfully disagree with the country, the, the community thing, but it'd be just another conditional use permit, same as we're doing now, we'd come through again with, with a new conditional use permit.
For a golf course in, on R1 property?
Yes.
Well, I mean, I don't want, I don't want to have a fight about it, but just to read for everybody, the definition of community center is, "A building for social, educational, or recreational activities," which I would expect it to say, "provided such use is not operated primarily for commercial gain." Okay? The use includes outdoor recreational facilities such as pools, ball fields, and golf courses.
Yeah, that's the not primarily for commercial gain part. So it'd be just a private thing if they, if they, you know, weren't charging for it. That's kind of what, what a community...
It's poorly written, but those are two separate sentences.
So would it almost be arguable whether they need a conditional use permit at all for this?
I think for this, because this is not a golf course. But if you wanted to build a golf course, I think it's a permitted use, in my opinion.
All right, this is a facetious question. What if I wanted to build a mini golf course in my backyard, in an R1?
Do you charge it?
Uh, no.
I think, I think...
It's for the kids and the neighborhood.
I think you could, because I think that would be an outdoor recreational facility.
Okay.
Which is what the language says.
So, Mayor or John, can we, can we, can we table this and ask the city, or ask staff to go back and rewrite the conditions with some level of specificity?
Well, you said that so well.
I know, I've been working hard on that one. Rewrite it with, with a level of specificity and then come back to council for consideration then.
I'm going to agree with William. I think, I think, I think we're on the right path, but I think if we put some specifics in there, I can't go that far, but I think it protects the city and it protects them as well, if we nail this up just a little bit better, tighten it up a little bit better.
It's not generic choice, so if that's what you want, then it's council's decision.
Yeah.
I think I'd feel more comfortable with it being tightened up.
So I move to table with city, the condition that city come back, once they've added some greater detail of specificity to the ordinance.
We have to discuss what we're wanting specified.
Well, I think what's, yeah, they're going to have to have some feedback. So you, you can reach out, you can let them know what things you would like to see in there.
Okay.
Well, I think he identified, and I'm just saying this out loud to see if I'm correct, I think he identified two things. One is to say, everything in the R1 restriction applies except where it's specifically waived here.
Yes.
And something about signs.
Well, so just using signs as an example of what's required in a site plan. So, so the site plan said that, you know, or the requirements for a site plan is that you have, you know, that it identify what signing you're going, signage you're going to have, but an R1 by right allows 32 square feet of signage. So if it's not in the site plan, then are they still allowed to have signs? That's just an example of a potential contradiction between what's in ordinance and what's in their, their proposal. But, you know, one step further is that if there's, part of our ordinance is that state a specific thing, like that you have 50 feet of paved road from, if you have a long driveway, you can have gravel, but the first 50 feet of it, as it adjoins city street, has to be paved. If we're going to waive that requirement, then state specifically that that's the requirement that we're waiving it. You know, 16, section 42-313, item 1, is waived. In its place, the gravel and access road must be approved slash constructed and maintained to comply with IFC appendix D. So again, you say what you're, what you're, what you're taking an exception to, and then in what way you're making an exception to that specific requirement, so that everybody knows exactly what is being allowed or disallowed. That's, that's what I'm asking.
Tom, we make businesses put, pave their parking lots. A parked, a paved parking lot is not required, or that's an example of something that William was referring to that we're effectively waiving.
It's an example of something you're effectively waiving, at least temporarily.
So I'm going to agree with William. That's another one that should be in there. Because again, if I had a nickel for every commercial business that came to Rolla and say, "Why are you making me pave my parking lot?" I don't want to look them in the eye and say, "Okay, well, we allow this guy to just, you know, look the other way." I don't think that's right. So if you're, I'm not telling you what, I'm not telling you I support it or not, I'm just saying, if you are making a conscious decision to waive a requirement like that, to William's point, you should put it in the document.
Is that the same requirement, whether it's in residential or not?
Residential is required.
Yeah, so like a church could be in a residential zone, so a church would have to pave their driveway or in their parking lot and all that stuff, yeah.
So is the question, why is it allowed to be gravel right now anyway, then?
I'm not making a case for or against. What I'm, what I keep coming back to is consistency.
Sure.
If you look at one developer and say this, you better do the same with the other developer. So to William's point, which I articulated a week, two weeks ago, I, I think this is loose.
And we just had, I'm trying to think of his name, he owns all that, we're on the roundabout, behind Price Chopper. And he was forced to pave out this huge section for the church to go in there.
He was forced to build a street.
To build a street.
Yeah.
Which was, you know, city planning, and he kind of got, you know, "Yeah, we're exempting this one?"
It's your decision to exempt it. Where I think I'm struggling with is, frankly speaking, I don't think you know what you're waiving and what you're not waiving, because it's not in this document.
And that's, that's my point.
Well, it's a little while, I was asking, we're waiving something, but it was already supposed to have been paved? Like, that shouldn't exist as gravel anyway now?
Put that aside. You may know because you're on planning and zoning, but I'll ask any other, other of you, given our codes, do you know what you're waiving and what you're not waiving?
Yes.
If the answer is no, then it should be in this document, so you make a conscious decision. Which I think is what William's after.
I think that's kind of the direction we've been going.
Yes.
Motion on the floor, was there a second?
Jackson will second.
Okay. Motion made in second to table it to...
Do the first meeting in October, give staff some time?
Okay. All in favor by, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Next item under whole business is an ordinance to approve the vacation of an easement on Hutchinson Drive.
So, so Mayor, real quick, the one, the one we just tabled, is it up to us to come back to Tom now and say, "Okay, these are the things we'd like to see"? Or, Tom, do you plan on, you plan on putting something together to bring back to us?
I think it's both of you. I think Tom is smart enough to have heard certain things tonight, so he'll start writing. I think you, you guys collectively should be feeding him bits and pieces of what you think should be in there as well. Okay with that, Tom?
Yeah, especially something that didn't get mentioned.
Okay. Thank you, Tom.
So this is the vacation of an easement, Hutchinson Drive, so I've got the property highlighted. This is on, as I said, Hutchinson. Basically, there's a blanket sewer easement on the property. At one point, there might have been a sewer line on the prop, on that property, but the sewer line was removed a long time ago, but the easement remains. And so basically, this is a, a request to go ahead and vacate that easement, because there are no utilities in, located in easement, and it's not needed, and it should help clear up title for these people. It's part of the, looking at the whole city to try to see if there's any vacations that could be done. This is the only blanket easement that I found that could be done without need for any survey work or anything like that. Do you have questions for me?
Any questions for Tom? If not, final reading, please.
An ordinance approving the vacation of an easement located at 418 Hutchinson Drive.
We have three items under new business tonight. The first is to, first reading of an ordinance to approve the 2526 service availability fees. fees.
The proposed budget that was discussed tonight include a $1 a month service availability fee increase from 13 to $14 a month. That would be for your standard residential user. All the other rate classes would be adjusted accordingly. This would make the average residential user in Rolla's bill go from 40 to $41 a month, a 2.5% increase. The non-meter rate, which is, you know, a handful of people in town aren't on RMU water, so they get billed a flat rate that will go under to $492 a year. Again, it was included in the 2526 budget. Any questions?
Darren, for the benefit of the, the public here, can you differentiate between the sewer, you know, availability fee and the actual treatment fees and why there's two separate fees?
Sure. So the service availability fee is a flat fee to cover the cost of collection system, that's, you know, all the pipes in the ground, that's the maintenance of those pipes to get the sewer to this treatment plant, and then the variable rate, you know, per thousand gallon rate covers the treatment cost.
Any questions for Darren?
Darren, I'm, I'm taking it the dollar is just because it costs more to do business, I mean, more for infrastructure, that type of stuff.
Yes, and we've got some, another large purchase coming up, probably next budget year, so.
Thank you.
Can I call point of order for a moment? I don't know if this is, if I should just wait till Darren's done. The last one that we just read on 418 Hutchinson Drive, was that final reading and a vote was supposed to be made on that?
It was. It was. What, did you read?
Yeah.
So I referred to it probably as the first reading?
We didn't do a roll call, though. I think what he's saying is we didn't.
Yeah, you're right. Thank you for that. Okay, just to clarify, we did have the final reading, but not the vote.
Yes, we need a motion, vote.
All right. Let's come back to that. Thank you for that. Let's finish this one first and then come back. So come, if there ain't further questions on the sewer fee, if not, can we have the first reading?
An ordinance amending certain sections of chapter 35 of the general ordinances of the city of Rolla, Missouri, known as the Code of the City of Rolla, Missouri, relating to sewers and water.
Okay. Now, going back to old business, the ordinance to approve the vacation of easement, we've had the final reading. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Rollups?
Aye.
Barrett?
Yes.
Turbin?
Yes.
Pace?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Han?
Yes.
Mcnevin?
Yes.
Gribben?
Yes.
Shelby?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
Balch? Oh, she's not here. Tonight's.
Back on new business, second item is a motion to appoint a council attendee for the lagers meeting. John?
Yeah, employees enjoy the benefit of being on the pension, the state-guided pension plan for local governments called Local Area Government Employee Retirement System. We've been in it for decades. Very well-funded. Rolla is fully funded in its lagers' membership. One of the requirements, being guided by state legislative action, is that they have an annual conference. And at that annual conference, there is a process of appointing a employer representative and an employee representative. The employee representative is actually nominated and elected by the employees to attend on behalf of those employees at the upcoming conference. The employer rep is actually delegated by the city council. So I would invite anybody on city council that has an interest in, in seeing what lagers' is all about. It's a, as I said, a well-run program. I think we spend 1.1 or $2 million of our budget on pensions, so it's an important part of our budget in employee services. Any city, or elected official that would like to go, I think you'd find it well worth it. If you don't have somebody from the city council that would like to attend, I don't know that it makes sense for me to go this year, but we, then council would delegate me to appoint an employer representative to go. Usually, we do that with the department director. The next city administrator would be a good candidate for that kind of thing, not knowing his availability at this point, but, so, let's first start with whether anybody on city council would have an interest in attending the conference. If so, then the council needs to ratify that. In the absence of that, if you want to authorize me to find an appointment as the employer rep, we can do that as well.
I think the mayor pro temp would be a good choice. Do you agree with that?
I, I was actually just looking at my calendar. I've got a, I've got a luncheon that I can try to move around, so yes.
Just, just before anybody breaks somebody's arm to do this, where are you?
It's Springfield. October 30th and 31st.
Go ahead. Yours is in the form of a nomination, right?
What?
Yours is a nomination or suggestion?
I will nominate, I will nominate Kevin. Oh, do you want to be seconded? Are you available?
I'll, I'll make it work.
I'll second the motion.
You accept the nomination?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other nominations? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Steve, I'll get you back.
Next item is a res, consider a resolution to demonstrate support for an affordable housing project.
So as you may recall, a few weeks ago, another developer came in to do this very same thing for a senior housing project. This is very similar, except for that it is not a senior housing project, so it's just for workforce, affordable housing. And it, and it's at Pine Tree Road and Richard Drive, which, if you're familiar with, I'll get to a site plan. So the project details, it's going to be a two or three-story design. He's, the developer is here with us tonight, he can answer more specific questions, but they are leaning more towards the two-story design, just to be more in line with the neighborhood, the surrounding neighborhood. Planning on 40 units, that would consist of two, three, and four bedrooms. A range of rents are proposed to accommodate a 30% of the area median income, 60% of the AMI, and some market rate. There are some amenities that they're proposing to be on-site, and again, these are all just proposed, and they won't know all the specifics until, if they get the tax credits and, and they move forward with the project. But some of the amenities would be onsite management office, fitness center, business center, community room with a kitchen, and then as part of the, of this trail, that we're suggesting that we support, the extension of the Acorn Trail with the project, they would do some additional green space and connectivity and/or shade structure, shade structures adjacent to the trail. These are the site plans that they had prepared for. So the one on the right is the three-story, that they've, that they're kind of going away from that one. The one on the left side is some two stories and a single story, and the bottom picture is just some examples of, of what they have done. I'm, I've, again, the developers here, but they have done some projects here in the city of Rolla, some residential senior projects and some commercial projects, so they're familiar with, with Rolla. So it's hard to see, but this is the, the trail plan on the left-hand side, and I've brought in the, the section that would be extended by the city to go with their project. And the project estimate was $91,280. And just as a reminder, the MHDC tax credits, it's an application process based on a point system, and so this government support will account for some of those points. The city of Rolla automatically has some points associated with it because of our, our income level. And if awarded, the tax credits can be sold to investors to help pay for the project. And with that, are there any questions?
So, Don, tonight's discussion is really not about approving the subdivision. It meets the current zoning, so that, that really isn't a relevant point.
Correct.
So tonight is really just to talk about the trail.
Correct.
Okay. So extending the trail through this area would be approximately $90,000, and I'm assuming that's whether we outsource it or, or done in-house as well, or some combination, right?
Yeah.
What's the time requirement?
As far as.
When we say we're going to do this, does that application or that tax credit granting require us to do it on a certain time?
No.
I'm sure of that.
Yes. And the way that we wrote the memo, it, it's very open to go, it, it would go along with the project.
Well, you just said something, along with the project. So does that mean if the project occurs over the next three years, along with the project means we have to build the trail concurrent with that? Is that what you're saying? Or the project starts, because we don't have the money to fund this, we decide 15 years from now, we're going to build that section of the trail?
I, I think it needs to be pretty concurrent with the project.
Okay, so it's full disclosure, then, it's not really that loose.
Correct.
You're, you're asking council to essentially be prepared to spend $90,000 if they get the tax credits and as soon as they start construction. That's what you're saying.
I don't know, they would have to be at the beginning of construction, but it's going to be done as part of that project, so it, it can be on the back end, but it's going to be done tight in with this.
Right now, we have no money, let alone $90,000.
Well, and this will take a year or two to sew through MHDC by the time they get a war, if they get a war. It's very competitive. They'll have to compete, they'll have to then submit financing and plans and all that, so the developer can certainly comment on their timing if this gets approved in the first round, but you're right, in the next couple of years, we would be committing to doing this portion of the trail.
Okay. As long as it's clear that we're making this decision knowing, and I hope the project is successful, don't get me wrong, but I want to know what strings are attached to this agreement.
Which, which I believe that we would make an effort to try to extend that trail system anyway, with, with projects that are, that are going along there.
Yeah, that was going to be my question, if, if this development is unsuccessful, then we're, are we committed to building the trail anyway?
No. Not unless another development went through and.
If this developer didn't come forward, maybe this is a question for either, I guess Darren wants to volunteer for the answer. If this project didn't drop in our lap, when would we do this section of the Acorn Trail?
In the next five years.
Okay.
Maybe sooner, but it would definitely be in the next five years. So, you know, the, there's an existing sidewalk along Pine Tree Road that is part of the Acorn Trail. It's not in very good shape, it's not very wide, I mean, it's been, you know, an identified project in our trail system for many years, it just hasn't been rose to the top of the projects to do, so, but I would tell you, probably the next five years, that would be a funded project.
So, Don, if we have enough leeway that we're not obligated before that, you're done?
Yeah.
Okay. Someone had a question?
So, so does their project hinge on the Acorn Trail, then? What they're bringing to us or what they want to do?
Points are.
That's what I'm asking. So the points?
Yes, the points are.
Okay. The, the second thing is, Don, kind of the way you opened this, do you realize that the letter that we all got says this is a senior?
Or is that the other one?
That's the other one.
That is the other one. I'm, I'm reading too, sorry.
I was hoping not, but.
So I don't know that it's, it's necessary for your decision on the trail, but does council want to hear from the developer? If not, the essence of time, we'll just keep going, but if you have any questions about the project, then we should direct them to.
Is this the old Huffman property?
It is.
Maybe nice to have something to write there. Have they acquired the property?
No.
It's under contract.
I'm excited to hear that.
Yeah.
That's pretty typical. In order to apply for MHDC, you have to be able to show that you have at least the opportunity to close on the deal. But again, it's very competitive, it's not unusual that these could, you apply for it, it gets rejected, you come back the following year.
Yeah.
It really comes down to the experience, the qualifications of the developer, the project itself. So I think we're all in agreement that we would love to see something happen on that Huffman property. It's looking really rough.
Yeah.
These days.
So, so Don, or is there anything they need from us? Do we need to, I mean, do?
This, this resolution.
Okay. Just straight up.
And staff has already provided, you know, the other zoning letters that they needed.
Well, I appreciate what Darren had to say, because I was a little bit hesitant of just like kind of promising into the future, because I was like, is this the direction? I, I didn't know that was part of the trail already. Like, I was kind of looking and trying to figure out, okay, where exactly is all of this? So knowing that that was really within the next five years, we were looking at doing this anyway, that property's been sitting there for a long time, there's going to be a development going there, it, it seems to make sense with all those factors in mind.
So if there's no other questions for Don, can we read the resolution?
We can. A resolution expressing the city of Rolla's support for Tara Vast Development Corpse, Course, Housing Project, Park Point, and its application to the Missouri Housing Development Commission for tax credits, including the city's commitment to support extension of the Acorn Trail.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Shelby, a second.
Motion made in second, any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Developer, good luck with the project. Claims under fiscal transactions, we don't have any citizen communications, we open the floor. I think I want to start with Annie. Russ and Judy, would you like to introduce? Annie's been patiently taking all this in tonight.
More patient than we are.
Well, you could sit down then, if you're going to be like that.
I just want to introduce Annie, a project from the Rolla Animal Shelter. I did not need another dog, but I did. And she was so calm and so quiet and so likable that we got her qualified to be a therapy dog. In fact, Russ and I had more background checks ourselves than she did. It was very extensive, but she's been going to nursing homes and the Kyle Center and every Oak Point, and people just absolutely love her, and I just want to introduce you two.
Judy, there's a difference between a therapy dog and a?
Service animal.
Service animal. Could you explain?
Well, service animal is, I, I got her qualified for both. That's her cripples or blind or deaf or whatever, but therapy require a lot more, you can just pay a check and get a service dog. And she had, like I said, we all had that background check, and she had to get tested. Susan Hinkle, that Missouri Patriot pause, she's the one that has the criteria, and so we went through basically the background checks and schools and everything. She is, she, while she's wandering, like, she wants to go and kiss and love everybody. She's just going to crowds and to parades and.
And how long did it take to train?
Pardon?
How long to train?
Us? We just took a test. She hadn't been trained. I mean, she hadn't been trained at all. She just was this, she's two years old.
Okay.
She has a very unusual demeanor for a border collie mix.
Okay.
And she's, everybody loves her.
And she's available to go into the community and?
As invited, yeah.
Explain how to do that and that sort of thing?
Yeah, we go to schools, nursing homes, anybody that wants us, we're by request.
And how do they do that?
And we've been to several, what?
And how do they, if somebody wants a request of this?
They can contact either me or Michael, or Vince DiACcoloni.
Okay.
She's been very popular and got repeats.
Well, thank you. Judy and Russ, you've been tremendous supporters of the animal shelter for so long, both the new and the old, so this is, we appreciate that, and this is a, it's a nice thing that we have a, one of our own.
I got things ready for the next animal shelter at the freezer. Anyway, thank you, I just want to introduce her.
Yep, thank you.
She'll have to go kiss everybody, she's not used to sitting in this still. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens that would like to speak? Any other citizens that would like to speak? Yes, Debbie.
I'm Debbie Castle. I live about six miles south of Rolla. We do have investment property in the city. What I'd like to do is read to you the letter that I sent to each of the council people yesterday for the benefit of everybody else. Okay. Dear members of the Rolla City Council, I do not see a simple answer for what to do about the pool. The ramifications of any decision are serious for the citizens of Rolla and the greater Rolla area. Cost analysis is essential. Legal options need to be defined and creative financial options explored. I propose that a committee be formed from the community to report to the council. The committee should include people trusted for expertise in engineering, statistics, law, business, and community partnerships. I have a list. I would want the committee to, number one, estimate the cost to stabilize the pool area for closure. Number two, quantify the loss of revenue when swimmers discontinue the center membership. Number three, understand the cost to reopen the pool after closure versus the cost to just continue operation. Number four, get a cost to remove the slide and patch the holes in the deck. Number five, get rough estimates of the cost to repurpose the pool area. Number six, analyze the revenue stream if center membership fees are raised for non-city residents. Just as an aside, it's amazing to me that when I go to the library to get a library card, I have to pay more because I'm in the county. But at the center, they don't care whether I'm in the city or the county, I've got the same fee. I think we need to look at something like that. Number seven, explore a surcharge on pool membership. Number eight, compare the benefits of local operation versus this outside management. Number nine, explore community partnerships and charitable donations. Number ten, explore the city and county tax funding possibilities. Number eleven, define legal options for separating the pool from other center operations. Number twelve, define the legal options for the center if it continues to not be financially viable. I'm sure there's more you can add to this list. I just, those are the things I thought of. The pool is the unique asset to the community. For many people, it is their only option for exercise. I've witnessed water exercise giving persons renewed strength after back surgeries, joint replacements, crippling arthritis, and car accidents. I love it that my friends in their late eighties and nineties retain youthfulness because of their dedicated water exercise. I have a dear friend confined to a wheelchair by MS. Her husband brings her to the pool nearly every day to swim laps. She needs this exercise to maintain strength and flexibility so she can transfer from her wheelchair. What will happen to these people if their only option for exercise is taken away? Rehashing failed promises is not helpful. Please learn from the past, but look forward from where we are now. The pool facility is in place. It is an investment that the Rolla taxpayers made. It is incumbent upon this council and all players involved to correct past mistakes and find a path forward. Sincerely, Deborah Castle. Thank you.
Any other citizens who'd like to speak? If not, moving on, the mayor of city council.
Hi, my name's Julie Murray. I've been a member of the center since we moved here in 2002, 2002. And I've used the pool ever since then. When my kids were little, I took them. Now, I go because I have multiple sclerosis, I just had back surgery. I'd like to walk without the walker someday. So, that's one of my only hopes is going to the pool. My back surgeon, I asked him after, when he released me from his care, I said, "Can I go back to water fitness?" And he said, "Oh, yeah, that'd be great. That'll help you get back in shape." So, please consider everybody's comments.
Hello, my name's Penelope Ischuk. I live here in Rolla. I use, I've been using the center for several years. And I had a major fall last year, and every physical therapist I went to, the doctors I went to, swimming was the best way to take care of it, any kind of water exercise. And not only that, you would be taking away a great source for children learning to swim. They are there every Saturday, just about every Saturday, and they need it. And we need it. So, please keep that in mind when you're making decisions about this. Thank you.
What was your last name?
I'll spell it, I-S-I-K.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Lorraine McFarland. And I watched the August 18 YouTube video. I couldn't be here for that meeting, or I would have been here for that meeting if I had known about the issue with the pool. And I have some questions. Am I allowed to ask questions during this part of the...
Let's try. There's certain thing, this is not usually a question and answer period, but go for it. Let's see, see what we can help you.
I thought I understood you say, mayor, during that meeting that there had been a sales tax proposed three times. It passed once and failed twice, is that correct? Okay. And I thought I heard you say that if it is on the ballot next April and it doesn't pass, that the doors for the center, the entire building, will be closed. Okay. Will that be on the ballot in April for sure?
Don't know that yet. We're working on a lot of options. Nothing I can elaborate on now, but, you know, let me take a step back. And I've said this before. My name on that cornerstone is something I'm very proud of. I worked damn hard over twenty-eight, thirty years. Well, I don't want to see that close. But over twenty-eight years, I've heard a lot of people bitch and moan about the center. And we're still fighting, to your point, Debbie, we're still fighting over a promise or a goal that was made thirty years ago, okay? At the same time, there is a lot of support out there. Now, is it the majority? I don't know. But over the years, I've heard from real estate people and recruiters and businesses that the center means something positive for Rolla. But unfortunately, over twenty-eight years, we hear from the people that are bitching and moaning, and all the people that value the center have been quiet, okay? So, I'm just going to say like it is. My intent in a couple of weeks ago was a bit of slap in the face to get some attention. And that attention is what brought you people out. And we're hearing from other people as well that says, "Hey, no, we want to see the center." Okay, well, it's about time after twenty-eight years you've said this. And for anybody to think that we didn't have a financial problem, whether it's an auditorium or the center all these years, I don't know where you've been. I mean, it's been well-publicized, well-known, and so on and so forth. So, that was the intent of really getting the community engaged, maybe in a crude way, but it worked. The second thing on the auditorium is, the auditorium has some challenges. And it's just not the operating losses, if you will. But, the capital investment that's going to have to go back in there to keep it running in its present form, all right? So, those are some negatives. The positives are clear. Every one of you that has come forth in the last couple of weeks and have written letters are giving us, you're very respectful, and you're giving us heartfelt examples of why it's important. Okay, so don't think it's falling on deaf ears. But there's a reality out there. There is a reality of it is, how do you finance the continued operation of that facility? And there's ways to do that. The other thing is, a lot of times over the years, when I would talk to John Butts about things, he said, "Well, there's things, could we do it and should we do it?" Okay? The could we is, do we have the financial wherewithal to do that? Okay? The should we is sort of a separate question. And I don't want to get anybody aggravated in this room, but here's a reality, that the money invested in that facility, given the number of participants, is not very good. Okay, now, we'd love to pack that facility, and then there's ways to do that as well. But the bottom line is, could the city afford to do something with that auditorium? And then, the should we do it? Because it's going to take the majority of the voters to approve that. So, that's where we're at now. And I've been very clear that our recommendation is temporary closure, not permanent closure. But, the community is going to have to decide some of these things. And to Debbie, your point, at least half of what you asked, we've already know, and we already talked about a hundred times. And as far as the process, we do have a plan for a process. It wouldn't necessarily be an independent city group that would do it themselves. But it would be with outside architects, facilitators to help that with. And the budget for 2026 has fifty? Oh, yeah, fifty. So, we have fifty thousand dollars in the budget to start that process within weeks. Okay, so it's not that we're not doing anything. We do intend to come back to the community with options. And we do intend for the community to weigh in as to which direction you want to go. Because at the end of the day, there are people that are passionate about the pool. There's people that say, "Well, there's not enough people that use the pool, which should be pickleball courts or something else." There's some that feel, "Well, maybe we could do both." We don't have the answers to that, but I assure you, our recommendation is to start the process to go ahead and do all that.
Great.
So, I don't know if I answered your question in a long about way, but...
Well, what can, I'm asking another question, I'm sorry, but what can we do to...
Sit tight for a little bit.
Pardon me?
Just sit tight for a little bit, weeks. Until we get that process started, then all your stories and all your involvement, that's when you need to get engaged.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
If there is a sales tax and it passes, does that take care of all of the financial problems for the center and the auditorium?
It would have to. The sales tax would have to provide a constant revenue stream for ad infinitum. And it would have to cover any operating losses and capital needed to keep the facility in good working order, and anything else that somebody would want down the road.
Okay.
You'd have to do it all at once.
Now, I have a comment. I went to the commissioners' meeting last Tuesday, and I brought this issue up. And they, well, I asked if a sales tax could be put on the Phelps County ballot, and they said that would cost between thirteen and forty thousand dollars just to get it on the ballot. And the commissioner said to me that he believed that it would not pass in the county.
I'd be surprised if you get one percent vote.
Yeah, and so...
Yeah, but so the putting it on the ballot, if we would have put the sales tax on the ballot in November of this year, the city would have spent forty thousand dollars just to put it on the ballot by doing it in April, because there's a fixed cost of having election, and those costs are prorated out. So, in November, there wouldn't have been much. If anything, we would have paid the whole thing. In April, that number's going to be substantially less because there's other things on the ballot.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you.
I just had one comment that maybe clarifies. I just wanted to check, because you'd asked about the, it went to the ballot three times, and the third time it passed.
Uh huh.
That was, I'm assuming you're referring to Prop P in that case?
Yeah.
So, that specifically excluded the center or its uses. So, there's never been a sales tax that's been approved to help fund the center.
To help, oh, okay.
So, the Prop P that the mayor was referring to is specifically for the park systems, and in its language specifically excludes the centers from being able to use the funding for that. So, I just wanted to clarify how you were asking that question.
Thank you for clarifying that.
The Prop P did include the splash zone, the outdoor pool, but did not include the center.
Okay.
And the two times that it failed, it did not specifically exclude the center.
Right.
Okay.
The two times it failed, the center was included in...
So, this would be a whole new thing?
This would be a whole new thing just for the center.
Okay.
And it's also going to be an uphill battle, and so...
It's a what?
It will be an uphill battle to get the votes needed. And that's why I'm saying, when the mayor says, "Sit tight," I mean, just keep this energy up until the vote, and just make sure and tell everyone how important it is to you, and try to educate people.
We got a math problem, okay? Let's take the math. The most likely voters to pass a sales tax for the center are going to be the users.
Right.
So, let's just argument, say we have eighteen hundred or two thousand members. You take out those that live in a county, you take out those that are not eligible to vote because of age, and you take out those that don't vote, okay? Now, you're left with a core group that would say, "By George, this is a good thing, let's pass it." That's not nearly enough to pass it. In order to have an initiative for the center, or the auditorium, or both, the majority of the votes mathematically are going to have to come from non-members. People in the community that are going to be okay paying an increased sales tax even though they are not a member or maybe never be a member. That's the mathematical problem that we have. And the auditorium is even worse, because the auditorium has a hundred users, give or take. So, these are, to Augie's words, it's something we've been trying to avoid. We tried to avoid, you always want to avoid going to the voters for a tax increase, but those are such a big hill to climb.
And on top of that, it's not something that the city can push. It's not something that we can be out there banging the drum. It's going to have to be you guys. It's going to have to be your group out there organized and taking this to the general public to even have a shot at it. But as Augie said, as the mayor just said, it's tough.
Just one more comment. I was a member in the past, and I was not a member for a while, and I just joined up again the day before I found out about this issue. And I remember going to the center, and when I'd walk in the door, that entire floor of machines was being used. And whatever was going on downstairs, there were a lot of people down there too, on the courts. I mean, it was full. What happened? You know, is it the, is it management? I don't know. When I walk in there now, there was nobody using the machines.
It's a good question. People have asked about different types of community programs that were there. Everything from Silver Sneakers to half a dozen others. It's the business model, okay? We have looked throughout the state of Missouri, and nobody is like us. Nobody is like us that has a center that isn't supported...
You said that on the eighteen.
By tax money, okay? So, for twenty-eight years, we have had to be self-sufficient. And we never have been in twenty-eight years. But in the last recent years, we got a grant for this and different things that have allowed us to go through. But, at the end of the day, we changed the business model a few months ago and went to something that's called medical integration, as opposed to a community center. So, if you were, if this thing was funded by taxpayers, you would run it on a typical community center model. Low prices, come one, come all, and have all kind of programs, okay? When you're in a situation where you have to run it to be self-sustaining, you have to run it like a business, all right? And a business is not, they're philanthropic if they're profitable. But to be profitable, you can't be philanthropic at the same time. So, when we made that shift that says, "Okay, the citizens told us three times about how they want this place run, now you're going to run it like a business." So, all of those little programs that were losing money, and they were good programs, but they were losing money. So, you have to change your business model to increase your chances that everything pays its way. So, if you go back to a community model, or let's say the taxpayers pass a sales tax, it's quite likely that the business model would change and go back to a typical community center. But that's what the change that you've noticed. It was a conscious decision to raise prices and get rid of any program that wasn't paying its way.
And mayor, you mentioned a few months ago, that was five years ago. I think you meant to say years, but...
Okay.
For the integrated medical?
Yeah. Medical integration of power wellness, we've been five years.
So, we're working to keep the whole damn place open.
Thank you.
You. Any other citizen comments? Yes.
One more time. Leslie Malott, M-A-L-O-T-T. I just want to understand that the center, Splash Zone Parks Recreation... I just want to understand that the center, Splash Zone, Parks and Recreation, are those separate issues? Do you think the people understand, you know, the recreation part of the center and the swimming pool? And then you have the Splash Zone and Parks and Recreation, and they're flush? Are they... They're not any financial difficulty? Is that correct?
No, that's not true. That's not true, Leslie.
It's not true. Okay.
Anything associated with park and rec is going to lose money. But you can't expect a ball field...
Well, that's what I understand always, that cities have to bond issue most of these things with parks and recreation.
Bonding gives you the capital to build it. You don't bond to operate.
Okay.
So anything associated with parks and rec is generally going to lose money. You can't expect a park or a walking trail or anything like that to break even. That's why you have such a thing as a property tax to pay for your parks.
Right.
And that's why you have a sales tax that is dedicated to parks. In our case, it's Prop P. It's to pay for those things. Splash Zone is part of the park system.
Right.
Splash Zone loses a quarter million dollars. I'd say a year. They lose a quarter million dollars in three months. So it's not, on a standalone basis, any better, any worse than the center. Fundamental difference is, there's a Prop P tax in place to subsidize Splash Zone. Were it not for that, we'd be having the same discussion about Splash Zone.
The difference is, the voters voted to work with the Parks and Rec, to put the tax out there with the Parks and Rec and Splash Zone. They voted not to support the center when this went...
They understood there's a separation of those. You think that was really clear?
I think they made it very clear to us.
My God, Leslie, the public outcry and the screaming that we went through for those years, yeah, they knew.
Okay. I've just... But I've just visited my hometown in Virginia, of 7,000 people. And they have a beautiful recreation, you know, swimming pool, an auditorium, meeting rooms, handball courts, walking track. And I'm sure you've probably talked with lots of people. How did you work this and how... I mean, and they've had it for many, many years.
They have a sales tax.
But it's just heartbreaking to think that a population of 7,000 can support that, and Rolla can't.
Yeah, they either have a sales tax, or they have some other funding mechanism that we don't have today.
And I don't know that part exactly.
Yeah. It's usually a sugar daddy that comes along to build it, and then it's usually the citizens who a sales tax will operate it.
Okay. I'll have to ask my bunch of sugar daddies if they can help me.
There you go.
You sit right there. You're right there.
I'm sitting right there. Okay. Thank you. We'll wait for two weeks and keep our fingers crossed.
I didn't say two weeks. Give us a few weeks.
Okay.
Just give us a few weeks. But stay engaged. Stay engaged.
(APPLAUSE).
Hi. Sorry, I didn't know we were talking about the center today. I'm Kristy Bennett. One thing I wanted to say, like, last time when the tax was up, I was campaigning and helping to try to push it in the community, and there was so much negative energy towards it, and a lot of people very against it. And so this time, when we were coming and talking to you guys, I thought, then maybe we should see what the community is thinking more, just very infirmally. And for the first time, there were people that don't use the center, that I actually talked to, that could see that it made sense, that it is a good thing for a community to have. And I did not get that energy at all last time. Like, it was backlash when I would go out in the community to try to pass that tax. So what I don't want is for you guys to think that if you can get it somehow to the voters, that we will just be complacent and not help be out in the community pushing for it and helping people understand what's going on, because there is still a lot of misconceptions out there. And so I think that if other people have been admitting their mistakes over the years with it, our mistake has also not been to be really in the community promoting it and encouraging it, and we will do that in the future. So you will not be standing there, like, trying to get a sales tax passed without anyone backing you.
We can't by law. The only thing the city could do is present the facts.
Right.
So let me go back 30 years ago. How did we get the center? The center we have today, and Splash Zone for that matter, didn't really come from City Hall. I'm going to say it came in spite of City Hall.
Right.
Because at the time, the city was very geared towards ball fields, ball fields, ball fields. And then somebody said, "Well, we need a place for meeting rooms." It was a citizens' group that formulated and spent the time and money to bring that initiative. Citizens spent thousands of dollars to bring that to the forefront to get it to a vote. As Dr. Stecker said last week, there were bus trips that we organized to take people to various communities to see what they had, so we would sort of duplicate it and all that sort of thing. To have a tax initiative based upon the last few that we've had, a citizens' group would have to be organized. The city can give information, but the city can't promote. Typically, I'm going to say $5,000 what was spent.
Mm-hmm.
It's okay. The citizens' group is probably going to have to raise about $5,000 to do all the promotion, the advertising, and stuff like that. I will tell you, in those ballot initiatives that was failed, there was an active group that also spent money, and I'm told on one of those, as much as $10,000. I don't sense that today. I'm like you. I don't see that group out there that's going to write $5,000 worth of checks. But I don't know.
We will not just be active towards you. We'll be active. We'll continue to be active.
Yep.
That it's not just, we're going to bombard you and then leave it. Okay.
Yeah. I don't mean to pass the buck. The city can do a lot. But at the end of the day, it's the citizens that are going to have to want this and pass it at the ballot box.
Right. I didn't mean to imply that...
No, I'm just...
At all. But yeah, no, we need to do more also.
I'm only saying that so that the citizens understand we're not being standoffish. By law, we cannot promote for a tax increase.
Right.
So as the citizens get organized and they come to City Hall, well, why isn't this council person, or why isn't this council person, or why isn't the mayor pushing this? It's because we can't.
Right. And I just don't want you to think that we wouldn't continue pushing it out in the community ourselves, that it would just be like, oh, good, they're going to save it, they'll find a way. Like, we know that there would have to be responsibility, that we would need to really be active also, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
(APPLAUSE).
Hey, John, just as a reference, when was the last vote? When did the last time they took this to... How long ago was that?
Well, the Prop P passed about 10 years ago, and there were two efforts that were called Prop A.
Sure.
I want to say it was in 2003, '04, '05, something like that.
Okay. So it's been a while.
Yeah. First time it failed really poor, just miserably, because it was the last effort, they had a senior center on it, and that really didn't have any answers. And then we came back a second time, and it was much closer at that one, but failed again. At that point, the council just didn't have an appetite to go back a third time, until they peeled off the center and just went back to really salvage our park system, because the park system since 2006, '07, '08, '09, '10 was really struggling. So Prop P was vital in keeping our grasses, just our yards cut, quite frankly.
You know, people realize, you know, you're kind of a little perturbed at us for maybe closing the center. But prior to Prop P, we were planning to close parks.
Right.
There were plans in place to rope off and close parks. So we don't want to do that. We don't want to do that with a park or a center, for that matter. Any other comments? Thank you for coming. Mayor, City Council comments? We have one listed, and that's a consider a motion to further table the center discussions until September 17th. So despite what my recommendation was a couple of weeks ago, we're asking you to keep the issue tabled so that we could still evaluate certain options and present you with options.
And when does the budget have to be passed?
Next meeting.
Next meeting.
So tabling it till September 17th, which will be the final time before the budget has to be approved?
Okay.
I kind of knew that, but I wanted to mention that, because...
Yep.
You were mentioning, like, you know, hold on for a little bit, as far as a couple of weeks, but budgetarily, this is going to have to be decided...
Yep.
...within the next couple of weeks, what we're going to do.
They're related, but they're not necessarily tied. So you could still punt on one decision, but approve the budget.
And it seems like a long way off, but end of December, first couple of weeks of January is the deadline to put it on the ballot, meaning...
For April.
Yeah. I'll be here before you know it.
It's not that far off.
The citizen feedback period is going to have to be fast. In years past, we took six months, we took a year. It's going to have to be fast-tracked. People are really going to have to want to get on board with this. Look, the city has a lot of public meetings, okay? The staff, they put all these things on the wall about the streets, the parks, and two or three people come. That can't happen this time around. We're going to be on a timetable that citizens are going to have to for or against, weigh in and weigh in fast through the fall. So... Any other council comments?
So we need to motion to further table it, correct?
I don't think so. You have to take a motion to take it off the table.
You have to take it off the table, okay.
Yeah.
We just said motion to further table, so I didn't know.
Right. But if somebody wants to take it off the table, then you do that now.
Did we need to go back to that easement?
No, we didn't.
We did.
I already did, my bad.
Okay. Comments for the good of the order? We got five of them here. Tentatively, tentatively, there's a council workshop on Tuesday, September 9th. In the early part, there'll be a closed session to talk about some contract issues, and then an open session. As council, remember, that was one we were going to dig into that budget a little deeper as it relates to the center, to give you, you know, some more comfort on that. We'll talk about whether that's still going to happen, but for now, that's the next meeting.
5:30 is what we had planned, correct?
5:30 for the closed session.
For closed session, okay.
The next council, formal council meeting for the public is actually Wednesday, the 17th. There's been some conflict with a number of councils, members attending the conference. So September 19th... No, I'm sorry. September 17th is the next formal meeting. Manage deer hunt. Dawn, would you like to come and advertise this?
So hunting season's coming right up around the corner, September 15th. We did one class this morning, and we've got three more coming, I believe, Thursday, this Thursday at 5:30, next Monday at 5:30, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 a.m. So we... Last year, we only had a couple of times because we only had half the season. So we tried to open it up to where we had quite a few class times so people could get here. This morning, Darren Wood from Department of Conservation came to the class, so that was nice to have him there to just give some feedback.
Dawn, how are we getting word out? I mean, again, last year, we didn't have the luxury of time. But how are we getting word out about the program and these classes?
So we've put it out on our Facebook page, and then I had emails from everybody that signed up last year, which was about 85 people. So I sent every single one of them an email with the flyer on it so that they know the times. And I think that it's been getting shared quite a bit.
How was the...
Maybe RD could do an article. There you go.
How was the turnout this morning, Dawn?
We only had a couple of people show up this morning.
I missed it this year. We didn't get the email.
But there's three more opportunities, so, yeah. Yeah.
And just out of curiosity, how successful was the deer hunt last year?
There were five. There were four doe and one buck that were taken last year. But again, it was the last half of the season, you know, a little bit colder, so hopefully we'll have a little more luck this year.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dawn.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here from the Audubon Society? If not, I'll speak on their behalf. They have a... First of all, the Audubon Society is an absolutely great organization, and so many people in Rolla do not know about the nature area that the Audubon Society has. Which street is that out there? How do I reference that?
White Columns.
White Columns Drive. Especially in the fall. You know, you're looking to stretch your legs. It's a really nice place. They've developed it all on their own. It's a great, great facility. But they have a fundraiser, which is their Festival of Native Plants Sale, which will be Saturday, September 13th, from 8 to 2, at the Audubon Trails Nature Center, which is out there on White Columns Drive. K-9 Plunge. Floyd, do you want to talk about this?
So a couple of notes on that, what you were talking about there on the Audubon Trails Nature Center. They're having hummingbird banding from 9 to 12. They're also having guided nature walks. They are doing kids activities, booths and displays. They'll have food there, and a free shuttle service from the commuter lot. So they have quite a big day. But the main thing is their native plant sale. K-9 Plunge is going to be at Splash Zone from 12 to 2. So it's $10 per dog. Humans get in free. We always have really good turnout for that. Typically, we have about 35, 40 dogs every year, and everybody has a great time. We have dog treats and different doggy events, and it's a good time. So it's our final closeout for Splash Zone, so we certainly invite everyone to come and bring their pooch. Questions? Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Floyd.
Thanks, Floyd.
Does council have any other comments for the good of the order?
There was one class I thought was kind of interesting. I don't know if this would be a Floyd thing, but I just saw it on Facebook. I think it's Missouri Department of Conservation's doing an introductory to archery, which I thought was a neat one. It's Saturday, September 13th, from 1 to 4 at Eugene Northern. I thought it was kind of a neat one to do, that they provide everything for it. So anyway, I just saw it on Facebook. If you want to elaborate on it.
Yeah, so it's the first time we've done this, so it's a partnership between us and MDC. So we're doing this introductory archery at Eugene Northern. So it's organized and very structured type activity for kids, runs 1 to 4 on the 13th of September. And it's a free class, registration's not required, but encouraged, so we get an idea of what kind of attendance we're going to have and what we need to provide. So MDC runs it. One of our own staff is also certified, and will be there helping as well. So that's going to be, I think, a fun partnership we have with them, and first of several new events that we're doing with the Department of Conservation.
Is there age limits, or maxes, or minimums, or anything?